Lord, we thank you for another day, for another day that you've allowed us to sit. God, we thank you for your grace and God, we thank you for your mercy. God, we thank you, oh God, for the fair, oh God, that just left, God, our community. God, we thank you, God, for everyone that went out. God, we even thank you for the hands, oh God, that played a part in organizing it, oh God. God, we say thank you. Now, God, we ask that you be in this meeting. God, give us the wisdom and the understanding and the guidance that we need to make decisions for our city. God, whatever we say or whatever we do, let it be done in love. God, we thank you, God, we adore you. God, we ask that you bless our nation, oh God, touch everyone, our president, God, our governor. God, touch them, God, in order their steps and the decisions they need to make. It's in Jesus' name we do pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, our God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any other terminals?
Mr. Robinson, approve of the municipal meeting in office.
Say it. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thud?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
And then she left, and then she left the office for, we have to call this. We need to get through a little those.
I had some questions on that, oh yeah.
Yeah.
I had to look it through again, like this guy on the top utility. Was that we increased the budget to seventy-three thousand, is that?
Right. Oh, you're talking about on a budget now?
Yeah, the mint budget, but.
We're gonna discuss the budget now?
Oh, okay, 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 fine, okay.
I moved up, we approved all this, I mentioned we were.
Hey, Curry?
Howard.
Roberts?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thud?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
All right, monthly reports. You have a chamber conference for rest of the business, huh? Andrew?
Hello, hello. I gave you all one of our monthly reports, I was keeping you all updated on everything in the chamber. I missed done so far this month, as well as a calendar of events of all the meeting activities that are coming up. If you flip over to that second page, you'll notice we have a lot coming up. We have ribbon cutting, we have community coffees, we've got a Rockdale, Community Rockdale, small festivals, trick-or-treat on Elm Street. There's just a lot, a lot going on right now, so our office has been very, very helping to get all those things planned. Um, there's a flight airport, Love's, they are going to have their representative ceremony on October third at ten thirty a.m. Of course, you know, we would love for everyone to be able to attend and show your support for that Love's location. They are scheduled to open their doors this Thursday, though, so go out and see everything that they have to offer and show your support for that Love's. I know they'll be busy, but hopefully you'll all live there on the other side of Love's. Also, I'm trying to think what else I have for you guys. Oh, Thursday, this Thursday, the first night of the month of this church, you know, community coffee. If you all are available to attend and show your support for them, I'd love if you come out and show some of your support as well. I think that's all I have for you.
Everybody, I want to commend you for an awesome job you're doing with the church.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome.
Oh, I wanted to mention the fair, too. You know, the fair is a community event, everybody comes on that fair. It's not anybody, but I, we should be so proud of that fair that our community put on. Every aspect of it, the parties, the parade, the premiums, you know, everything. It was just a wonderful turnout this year, and I know that all the city partners really mentioned it out loud, so thank you guys all for showing up.
A lot personally, don't we keep the fair out?
I think, I think it's just getting bigger every year, it's, you know, needing going.
All right, thank you for listening to this word.
Only thing we have is, we have one that's going to Arkansas Lloyd North Smith Training Academy. He left last Sunday, he's made of the week, so we're giving, sending our kudos to him through text. To let him know that, you know, we're behind him, and we just wait for him to graduate and come back. That's all we got right now. But, okay, October thirty-first, Halloween, there will be trick-or-treats on the streets, along with, um.
Trick-or-treat on Elm.
Trick-or-treat on Elm Street. So, you know, because we passed some people a call, we required that, but it also be, um, celebrated on the actual day, and it will be.
A lot of the houses will call and say what they, the city wants us to open our doors and turn on our African handout candy. So, Terry said, um, October thirty-first, I'm happy for you.
You got, you got the drill down right there, sir?
I do, yes, sir.
You got it ready to roll?
Got him ready to roll. He's, he's still training, though, he's, he's still, we went through the, uh.
All right, all right. Officer McKinnon, she's called up to her vehicle, and then, uh, Officer.
Eros.
Eros, and bring him in.
He said, thank you, Eros.
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 I'm E.
Eros. Eros, Eros.
E.
Brother, Eros.
Eros.
I think that's why.
Officer.
Officer Eros.
See, why she done that, how did you share, you got four cell phones, you're.
Uh, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
We're working on it. Well, I do have the dedicated, so, um, just being, being real choosy. Take our time, take our time. But I would like to properly introduce him, now she wasn't able to be here, uh, last council, because she had got a pause, so she wasn't able to be here.
Eros, say, what? You know, the thing about, say, Eros, you know, uh, the dog that come from the prison that escaped, I guess, that's funny.
You wanna keep my words?
Oh, you know, I said what you do, Eros. E.
I'll be patient.
Okay, who you talking, and you ready to roll?
I'll be telling, that's all ready, I'm gonna roll.
And how long is she gonna have? Eros.
For a day.
And how long is she gonna have?
Yeah, I can.
About three months.
She was, she was.
She graduated the last academy, the last council meeting.
Okay.
But she just.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm in. She's a staffer, you don't want to come in.
Yeah, I don't want to leave, I would.
Good job. Good job.
Are you Officer Eros? Good luck, that one, though. Especially if you're gonna stay in. Okay, good job, Eros.
Good job, Eros.
Right.
Eros, where you located from, sir?
Right.
Where you from?
Huh?
He did read it up, where you from?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I think you might be gifted.
Too young, bud, John, he might get you.
No, Miller got. He said, I'm, I'm all listening to. He, 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 I knew.
He's training, well, he comes from over cities. They, uh, get him from over cities, he's, uh, mixed with Jermell Shepherd and Malloy. Uh, he's a drug-infested dog, tracking, uh, search and rescue.
He's a show.
We went to, uh, we went through four weeks of training together. Uh, we still train every day, about one and a half, one, uh, hour a day. Uh, and there'll be more training that will go to.
Is that where you go to all?
He'll be two years old, hey, hey, hey. He'll be two years old, uh, October seventeenth.
Oh, yeah.
It's okay.
All right.
It's okay. All right, let's go.
Thank you, thank you.
Why, Eros?
Hey.
Eros.
He has to, you know, maybe, you know, make it stop, you know, maybe, so, he, he's young, but he's a hunting dog on the streets.
Do you have a motion to, uh, ordinance number six?
I'm looking to see if the ordinance that we do every year, I guess, kind of, hold five mils. Okay, I have a little bit of the, uh, we, the court, you know, six.
In second?
Second.
Second. Yeah, we, this could take a while. Ordinance number six of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance, ordinance carrying a five, ten, carry, carrying a tax of five mil of all real and personal property in the city of Preston, Arkansas, for the year two thousand twenty-three, invited to the election thereof. Now, therefore, if you, now therefore, be obtained by, ordained, for a quick reason, by the city council, city of Preston, Arkansas. Section one, there is hereby a tax of five mils of all real and personal property in the city of Preston, Arkansas, for the year two thousand twenty-three, for general terms, it's collected during the year twenty twenty-four by the sheriff of the Bay County, Arkansas, at the time and place of the same man, general, state, and county tax. Section two, that the city record will ever serve fact of the fact that this ordinance is the county clerk of the Bay County, Arkansas. Section three, this ordinance will be full portion and effect from and after passing the certification, that's on the local approval, like I said, today, so, February twenty-third. We need a motion to, uh, brief that title on. So.
Say it.
An ordinance carried, carried a tax of five mils of all real and personal property in the city of Preston, Arkansas, for the year twenty twenty-three, invited to the election thereof. Sorry, I didn't hear the order there. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mitch? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thud?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Do you need a motion for the second reading, by title only?
So. Thank you.
Okay, well, before we read this, now, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thud?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mitch? An ordinance carried a tax of five mils of all real and personal property in the city of Preston, Arkansas, for the year twenty twenty-three, invited to the election thereof. Okay, we need a motion to adopt. Mr. Robinson, we have the document, ordinance number six of twenty twenty-three.
Say it.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Austin? Williams?
Yes.
Thud?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Here's a brief. All right, also, it's a nice business. We have a crawl, this is crawl down, down to the county, this budget should have a amendment to this year's budget. A budget amendment, to be, like, a copy of it. Just go ahead and tell them, uh.
All right, Howard, I, you, you're asking about that increase in the budget to seventy-three thousand, go to the second page on that thing, and that's where it comes from, out there. By the, by the amendment of all over the county. Everybody understands, we're probably going out to amend it again in December. We can't wait till January, we got to do it in December, we can't. I like to wait in January, and then we put twelve months on it, but we can't, the Congress will not allow it. So, this, this budget, uh, is good because we're actually reducing expenditures in the budget enough to provide it's positive for our, for, for the budget this time. We don't, we didn't have to, we had that increase somewhere in the year, but we had a decrease on, and we did have some extra revenue. Now, I'll be glad to answer, I appreciate, by the way, I appreciate the budget for being helping off this, they do a good job. Question? I tried to, tried to document it by each department, so we can say each department, plus the minor trades department.
Can we real, doctors and women, question?
Now, a question, Howard? Uh, yeah, it, it's something that, I, I be under every year. Okay, let's go up to the library on the next, for the last one.
Okay.
Uh, the original of the budget was what, fifty-five thousand?
The original budget was said fifty-five thousand.
Okay, we increased it to fifty-five, right?
Right, yeah, there's been expenditures in the library, and we've had a, we just had a review.
Right, right, I can understand that, but now, my concern is, are we the only one supporting the library, do the county have any resources, open?
The, 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 in a local agreement, read. But the library will furnish the village increase, village, library village at the county place. And that's all they're obligated for, and the agreement reads then that the city catches any excess. So that, uh, as I remember, the village increases by, a village gives about twenty-four thousand dollars to the library. So, that means the city is putting sixty-five in it.
Mr. Cobb, that's one of those interloper.
That's one of the, that's one of the interloper.
And, and see, that was my concern, that, uh, I'm thinking we need to eventually get around to looking at each of those interloper agreements, and see whether or not we both, uh, share pretty close with what we need to do.
Bruce, Bruce is in the midst of it, and I've got a whole stack up in my house, I'm trying to refill.
Okay.
So, so we can see what needs to be done. That's all I can tell you about it.
Okay.
The interloper agreement reads that the city will fund whatever the excess is over the village.
Right.
And that's the way it reads.
Well, I think it looks like a whole lot of interloper agreement that needs to be revised, because the city is unable to spend money like we used to spend.
No, I, I agree.
The thing does not positively affect the city.
I agree. The city, the city was able to do a lot when we had potlatch sitting out there, that, we don't have potlatch out there anymore, the city, city's got a tight knit belt.
Right.
I hope we can get it done in time when people start making their budget, they'll understand, I didn't mean used to do. We can't do it all. We've got to re-licensing interloper agreements.
Well, the budget committee's gonna start a month early, we're, we're gonna start a month early on the next budget, so y'all have to have this, uh, this in the council meeting, okay?
That, that's all I can, thank you.
Okay.
All right, that's what we're. And then, if we need a, do you can do? Say it. Hey, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh, to the main?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
All right, now, the, 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 uh, I'm gonna start off with just preparing us to protect the water sewer department. I'm gonna say it before.
I wanted to, uh, make everyone aware of, of something that was going on in the water department. Uh, we've been approached by a company out of Louisville, Kentucky, and they're called Climate. Climate Vision is a private company, and they're in the business of installing NOAA rec, NOAA weather radar, radar stations. NOAA weather radar station, that's hard to say. These stations are designed to fill in the gaps in the weather radar system throughout the United States. The reason for these gaps, uh, is the weather radar angle, Little Rock on Weather Government, one in Shreveport on Weather Government. The earth is round, so when they shoot the radar, it goes up in the sky. And you get two hundred miles out, that radar is about three miles up above the ground, it's where it's indicating the weather. A lot of weather is underneath it. They determined that Preston is the prime spot for a gap NOAA radar installation. And they will install it on our water tank, the side holes there. Now, this is something they would, they want to do through a lease agreement. It won't cost the city anything, but the city won't make anything off of it either. However, we will be given access to all the data that comes off of that radar. So, if there's bad weather coming or anything, uh, that's happening, we'll know about it. And this station is supposed to fill in the gap in short, you know, with the times that they can, uh, give you advance warning of bad weather by ten, fifteen minutes, maybe twenty minutes. And, uh, they will install it on top of the tank, it'll be the dogfall looking round dog. Uh, I think it's an eight-foot diameter dish, or not dish, but, but, uh, blow, speaking of about ten feet tall. There'll also be a, uh, backup generator stationed on the ground, and a, uh, cabin that has all the electronics in it to operate. There will be a lease agreement, there's, uh, by contract, what they do will not interfere with any of the operation of the city's, uh, radio telemetry. We operate our radio telemetry to fill our water tanks. It won't interfere with that, it won't interfere with the, uh, cell phone tower across the interstate. It's supposed to be completely autonomous, but not bothering anything else. So, we're looking into this, we've had, uh, two people show up and visited with us, and we went out to the site. Uh, the mayor was with us, and, uh, looked at what, what it entailed, and, uh, everything, so. They're wanting to know if we're interested in it, and they'll come visit with us and present the lease agreement, and everything's, uh, above board, but it is. They, the way they build these radio telemetry, I mean, the way they build these radar stations, they install it, it don't cost us, but they make money off of it. But that's the cost of installing and operating. So, that's where we are. And, uh, so, if the city's interested in it, they are very interested in it. And we, we made sure that it wouldn't interfere with any of our operations, and it wouldn't interfere with the structure or anything to do with our water tank. Because our number one priority is protecting the water system and the water index system. And, uh, they have all of the engineering data and all of the stuff to show that what they do is, this is not the first one they've installed. And, uh, it would benefit the city and the whole state, actually, as far as the weather radar. It would greatly enhance capabilities, uh, for that. So, I want to make y'all aware, this is something we're looking into, and we're interested in it, and they want, we want very quickly. Where?
Yes, sir.
It's not good, and it's a good thing, but you said, uh, that I look concerned, but you said that they're gonna make money off of it.
Yes, sir.
But we're not gonna get none.
Exactly, I asked them that, that was my question, straight, straight up, I said, we all gonna make money off this, we're not.
Well, what was that, what, what, what is the reason why? If you make a lease agreement, all we're gonna do is give them verbal agreements that they can do, right?
No, we're gonna get, they're, they're gonna sign the lease, I've got a copy, right here, there's a lease agreement, before they begin, like.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, we'll sign a lease agreement with no forms attached to it, right?
It's not gonna cost us anything, like, there, I.
No, but I'm saying, we're not making it, and so, no forms, that's what I'm saying, attached to it.
Right, and I answered that question, the mayor.
You're right why I'm saying that.
Y'all gonna find out if it's not gonna, we're not.
Right, I, I agree to this, but my thing is, it's one of those things that you get caught ten years from now, wherever, way around the situation, that we made an agreement that's gonna affect the city in some kind of way, I, I, I just don't wanna, you, you understand what I'm saying? I wanna make sure that it's not gonna affect the city in no kind of way.
Right, it's, it's, that's why there's a lease agreement. There was, in, in the beginning, it sounded like it was gonna be a verbal agreement, you know, but, no, there's a, there's a lease agreement, and it's, like I said, I have a copy. Uh, it's more than a couple of things, things, and, uh, we haven't had a chance to study it yet, but.
And you said it's ran off a generator? Sir, you said it's ran off a generator, there's.
It has, it, it will, it will have an electrical hook up, electric meter, they pay the meter on them. And for backup during a storm, they will have an electrical generator on site, that's what they're saying. So, that they don't lose operations during the bad weather, that they need to be looking at.
I get that question.
Yes, sir.
Perry, have you, have you, like, researched and found another state or city or somebody?
They gave, they gave a list of, of everywhere that they operated, all the different ones, I haven't talked to a system yet, but they gave, uh, that, they would be happy to come and do a presentation and show everywhere they've, they've operated. I haven't talked to a systems yet, but they gave, uh, that, they would be happy to come and do a presentation and show everywhere they've operated, what all they can do. They're very well worded, they'll answer all the questions and I got pointed with them on, on the expense that while we're not gonna make any money, if they, they had the answers, they, they're used to those questions.
What, what was that, what was it again?
The, the cost of operation is they market, uh, the rate, the, the information, the rate that they, to NOAA radar picks up. They market it to, uh, airports, to, well, there's a list of everything that they do, but. First, the, first place it goes is to the weather service. The weather service and then rate, and then TV stations and, and all these others that report the weather. This will be some of their data. And there will be a station, you know, Preston will be a permanent base for weather information. Maybe this is the spot.
It ain't that little.
So basically, you're gonna respond to put it to plan. They, they won't put it on top of the water power, beside it, or something. They, that's it. The best elevation, the best location to fill in the gap in between. They'll, that radar is already fitted and that's the weird part.
Look, we'll be learning, like, you know, which I, I'm all out of spirit with weather anyway, because this is on, it gets pretty nasty sometimes. So, will the warning system come the same way like Brew yourself, or like you've been doing, or will we have a special?
One of the other things is, all this information will go to, to the TV stations and all to report the weather, but it will also come to the emergency services locally. The county that's, that's out looking for bad storms, or those, they will get the information actually as, as it happens, you know, per town. And, and there'll be a training. They mentioned they were training the city and whoever we get to, to receive this information, they'll be trained to show how to, to, uh, use this information, what, you know, what's coming out. But right now, we're, we're still in the conference stages, uh.
But Perry, how much, how much property are you talking about? How much, what did, what all this, what all did the city expect it to run? I mean, how much property will it give up?
Oh, you don't give up any property. He said some top.
He said some top.
It'll be something about the size of this table except it's a tall. And there'll be a gophos on all sides, no one on top of it. You know, two hundred feet up there, or you're only, I don't know. It won't take up any area, but they want it on that elevated platform. It'll be well, it'll be permanent and, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's an engineered system. They have the engineers, uh, they'll do the structural design and everything. It's, like I said, it's not the first time they've done it. They've done quite a few all around the country. And it's set up to hold up the bad weather. Believe it or not, the water tank's one of the most stable structures there is when there are storms go through and it washes over the land and all the, the water tanks still stand. It's all over it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who is the board from, uh?
Uh, I never, uh.
We need more, more information than that.
We'll, we'll get with them and if y'all want to come and make the presentation and then go to Mary.
Then how, which, which can add further information that you have and.
Right. Just keep it all so. Yeah, everything will be alright.
Give your time and think about it.
They did, they did say, all we have to do is call them and they'd be happy to come down and do a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
All right, one other thing we're doing that has nothing to do with NOAA weather radar, uh, EPA, back in the nineteen nineties, uh, started a lead and copper lead and copper rule. Where every water system in the United States tested lead and copper. We've been doing that since the early nineteen hundreds, nineteen nineties, excuse me, since the early nineteen nineties. We've never gone above the limits. We've always remained under the minimum limits for copper and fully. In two thousand and twenty-one, they revised the lead and copper rule. Now, every water system in the United States has to develop a lead service line inventory. Every water service in your system has to be cataloged, inventoried. And you have to tell what kind of material it's made out of, if there's any lead and that's, that, we count over two thousand water services. They have to be the individual one. And we've got a lot over the twenty-fourth of next year, two thousand twenty-four. So that's something else to work out. There's also, uh, this, there, this goes to the point that if we, if we identify the possibility of a lead service line, to verify if it's there, you gotta dig it up and look at it. There's also, uh, the State Health Department has a contractor that is available to help cities do this. But first, we have to identify the possibilities for, for them to look. We're in that process right now. And so if, if y'all get a call from somebody saying, hey, there are, leaving my program, they say they just want to see our service line. It's, it's not gonna be, it's, it'll be early next year before that happens. There is a possibility we'll be digging replacements around town to verify if there's any lead and service lines.
So do you have any equip, you got the equipment to, to do it?
Contractor from the health, uh, State Health Department, please go come in and do that. I'm hoping it'll be what they call a pocket. Now, they don't give you the backhoe. They've got a high pressure water jet and a vacuum. Jet hole in there and then suck that out and just look down like a post hole and see what's down there. It's a lot of this in place even.
So Perry, uh, present city people would know when it's a possibility, something will come out.
Once, once we complete, once we complete this inventory, everything we do has to be known, has to be made public. So if you wanna check on your service line, you can come to City Hall and open up the list, find your, your address and see what kind of, uh, water service you have to your house.
But then you mentioned something about some people maybe start digging, go out there. My question, I'm asking.
The digging, the digging will start afterward, will be only on the city side. But there will be some digging, yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll have to announce when it starts. But this is something that's coming and it's mineral requirement. Of course, it's a lot of fishing in these other places, but.
So now, who's gonna, like, if you find lead in that, like, who's gonna pay to have it removed?
That's the next step, they have to determine it. Right now, we're, right now, we're in the identification process. Then you have to identify, if you've got it and it's not lead in the water, it's a pipe made out of lead.
Right, right.
Which, since we're a hundred year old system, we really don't have a record of every water service in our system. Because it goes back to before nineteen hundred. So, uh, we're, we're over a hundred and twenty years old. So it's not gonna be easy, but it's required. And every system in the United States has to have it. And with all that said, they like. Just to make you aware of some studies going on.
But I'm hoping, I'm hoping, even though, you know, they're supposed to, that, that, uh, they have some financing to, to bet.
Yes.
Individual people on foot and alive.
That's, that's, there's something that's down the road, but there is. I've been here forty-seven years and I have never seen any lead pipe on the customer's side of the meter. We are supposed to also identify what the customer has. That goes totally against the customer's side of meters, right? That's an issue that's still being resolved. We don't have any responsibility on the customer's side. But they want us to identify it. So there's, there's an issue there that's being resolved. Not just to talk about it, but everywhere, and that's.
So Perry, do you have any idea what that project could cost the city?
Until we, until we know if we've got any and how many we have, then, of course, my deal is if you gotta dig it up to see what it is, you gotta dig it up, go in and replace it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but they're not gonna pay us to do that. They're gonna pay us just to dig it up, look at it, and tell them, and then make a plan for when you're gonna go dig it up and replace it. So it's, it's a government operation.
There'll be a cost for the city, just don't know how much.
Uh, there will be a cost to the city once we start replacing it. To do the inventory, the State Health Department is paying for a contractor to assist us with it, which we've signed up for that help. Because we are an older system that, that could possibly have some, uh, very few, one of the, the only place that I remember ever seeing service lines that were completely debated was on Main Street and all this been changed out when they redone the streets. So it's the highway relocation projects, they changed all that out, so that's gone. That's the only place I remember ever having lead service lines and come out from the highway and the, the entire service line was a lead pipe. Those are, they're away with years, years ago. So, we're hoping we'll come back here, but, but there's always a possibility because we are an old city. So, but that's something we're having to do. And we didn't plan on, the government made this rule, actually, it was with the last president, he, he signed it into, into law. So, we're good. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
All right, thank you, Perry. Uh, Jamie said Love's opening the twenty-first?
Yes, for my office, I told they were open the twenty-first. Open angles won't be open until.
Oh, no.
Uh, they'll be coming soon. But they scheduled their ready committee for two weeks after their opening.
And what time is it, the opening is?
It's only the twenty-third. Ten thirty.
Ten thirty. No, I was telling you to go after the opening on the twenty-second, you need to go ahead and.
Oh, the twenty-third, I'm not sure if it's on there.
What you said, twenty-first or twenty-second?
Twenty-first, it's twenty-third, I turned it on.
Twenty-first.
It's just for search. I can find out a time, what time Love's been, uh, in, like, you know.
We, we've been watching this operation from the beginning, regardless of conflicts with water, considering utilities out there. Just Love's the first best operation. This service line is very massive.
How big was John's video, so?
The store, and it's a, it's very massive. And it's not small, it's so large.
We've been, uh, working with Loves for over a year now and we definitely appreciate Love Truck Stocks out of Oklahoma. Call additional Loves two point oh. One of the few places that has two Loves. Several people from the city have been required to do a lot of work before Loves. I'm gonna mention them. Bruce Bean, he set up some big time people, some big time people. And he has done a great job answering all their questions about permits and zoning and sort of. David Jones has had to answer many, many electric questions. Only ground, Peter Nestle, the water sewer guys that's getting, getting us hours out there. Also, Jacob Nee is an electric guy. Most places you go by there, either the water sewer or the electric are there or both of them. Mayor Goddard, the EEO, had job fairs. A lot of people don't realize, but Love's just hiring one hundred people, one hundred new jobs. So we're very thankful that Loves chose us to do this. It's really gonna benefit our community. They are in the future. And I don't know the last time we had an exact, like, we got the boat tanks. That's all you hear is boat tanks, so I hope they're boat tanks and chickens. Love that one, a lot of people talking about boat tanks and chickens. If it is good, people will come from all ways to you, they'll come from top of the other world. Okay, good other good news, we got the dates. I know y'all all running out. Bruce got the dates on our cell, this week, winter conference. It's gonna be January the tenth through the twelfth of twenty twenty-four. All right, here's the fourth date, early bird registration begins November the seventeenth. When it started?
In March.
Started last Friday, so we better get on this, get quick on the early bird registration for the.
We're always waiting for your, wait for us to go ready. Like, they didn't sit down in advance to notice that that won't start this night. Bruce, she called me, I sent my email to that workup front that day. I went back and opened it. I called my friend, Mary, one of them set up her works. She said they sold it out, ten days, Friday.
We're back, yeah, we're back to free them.
We're on the way to this for, for the very hour now, we've gotten down to get to the.
When, they're not wanting to go back there.
Bruce, have you any information on the purchase stuff?
No, sir, the, uh, the registration, you go ahead and just, uh, for virtual or?
They still take a ready registration for virtual?
Yes. I'll, I'll bet on the order through the seventh day, back until December twenty-nine. If you missed the early order, you gotta be registered by December twenty-nine, so you can go.
All right. Okay, here we go, the announcements for our discussion from the council.
Great, that's good. Mayor, I, I don't know whether we done, but I, I really want to thank our citizens for passing the even sales, familiar. I think that was something that I'm glad we did. And also, how are we, how are we coming in, uh, on, uh, uh, city attorney? Are we having a prospect?
Same time, we have seven prospects and so forth. But one other thing, Mary was coming right up to me, she said, is the, uh, drainage drain.
Okay.
Uh, Hay Street, Old Street, Olive Street, a couple more, in fact, that way, uh, the bid open is next Tuesday. So that means they'll probably get started in October on that drain. Bid open the next Tuesday, two to five.
Is Arm over there by, that's over there by?
Arm's where, hopefully.
Okay, and what about Gar up right there?
Gar, that's one of them's on there.
Okay.
I'm kidding, y'all.
This is asking you, someone from the community before for the turn, city attorney?
Uh, we're not getting in a rush. Right now, you need, you need lawyers, we got, this police got ten lawyers on staff. Uh, the way our budget is, we're saving twenty-five hundred bucks for next day. So, let's move right on that.
Can you tell us about the date that the one set sale try to take effect?
January the first. Um, we've already got all that approved, we got the information back. They sent it to the certified, we got all that took care of us, so should be able to.
We'd just like to announce that we have a community feed on the circuit starting every day on quarter green under there.
So let me. Okay, council, I think that's. Okay, under citizens communications, we had two cards, question was Jerry, this.
Sorry, I don't want to do a second.
Jerry, if, but you have the floor.
Say, okay, uh, well, first of all, all of the, you know, pertains to the police department. And, uh, first of all, not nine, uh, questions that have come here from other people. And, uh, for over a year, you know, past couple of years, I've talked to a lot of city employees and they talk, you know, about the same thing. Apparently it bothers them and they're convinced that, uh, there's family members working at the police department. It's not my issue, I don't care, but, you know, you get along with your employees, if you explain with them, you know, if they're not, let them know. Because if they are, we're in, you know, violation Arkansas code, title twenty-one, public officers and employees, chapter eight. Ethics and conflicts of interest, subchapter one, general provisions, twenty-one dash eight dash one oh one. Uh, and goes on to the policy title, hiring relatives, policy number three zero point one five, citation, Arkansas code. Twenty-five dash one six dash one oh one, so might, you know. That's all I'm saying. Oh, and, and the next thing was, uh. Last Thursday, uh, I was trying to catch up with employees at the police department, so I was hanging around another, uh. Lobby there sitting on the bench and, you know, I noticed, uh, there was two people, different people come up and try to take their business. One of them, I'm, I'm assuming it was a uniform person, and, uh, so they got in the way that it's, uh, closed up. The next person, uh, I don't know who they were, but I walked over and talked to him and they pointed out that there's a camera up above the door. So you refer to the camera to see how many people have come in and checked on the door and, and left. And the man asked me, he said, how do you both the police department? I don't, I don't know anything to do with it, I also wouldn't ask that question. There's three signs that, you know, continuously seen, running errands, gone to the court, or gone to lunch. And, uh, Thursday, uh, well, let's, let's back up a little bit. I need to get a question, there was a legitimate question, uh, answered. I called and, uh, talked to somebody at the dispatch, uh, where, you know, your nine in the month balls go. And, uh, somebody called me later, but this person was in training and they just didn't know, they gave you false information. And, uh, so, but I was going by what he told me. He said, I had to get that information from the police department. So it's the service day before, uh, later day, uh. I called, couldn't get an answer, so I went by and it was a sign that we were saying close for training, come back next Tuesday. Well, Tuesday, uh, I got busy with something and I just totally forgot, which since, you know, I had already talked to the other dispatcher. And they looked it up on the computer and they answered my question for me. But, uh, there was still another issue. And, uh, so I called, I skipped Tuesday, called Wednesday, and then I was told by whoever answered the phone. That I wouldn't be able to talk to anybody until Friday. Well, Friday morning I called and then I was told that everybody's gone on the call. And then I called back and everybody was gone to court and then I called back and I couldn't get an answer. And I called Mr. Bruce, the city manager, and he told me blank deal, but she went, she took to Newton hires to, uh, the training center in Canada. And, uh, but anyway, uh, that's, uh, I don't know. Oh, uh, the last person, you know, when we did finally call, uh, last Thursday afternoon, uh, you told me that you were gonna get with the prosecutor and attorney, uh. Well, why didn't you tell me that you were gonna check with prosecutor and attorney, cause of that?
That's my right, that's who I can hurt to.
Well, why, why didn't you tell me you were gonna go with prosecutor and attorney? I mean, if it's not in my business, why didn't you tell me? I get the man nothing there. So you do what's in the name.
On the first clock where he says some family members worked there. I can't think of not saying that you're, before.
Well, I mean, wouldn't I, you know, listen.
Four members in the Georgia family, a bride and husband partner for us, descendants of my master's credit assistant. And the chief of police. And it would be, is a certified counselor out of the French Canada, local area. So somebody gave you a boss admission there.
Well, it's not my question. I was bringing it up for the city employees to let the city employees know that. And, you know, they won't be upset about, uh, because a lot of people that are over the city are the hundreds of their question. That is the chief's daughter that's, uh, there to handle the phone, that they're off to bid. Uh, it's not my question.
Is that from the police? Do you have somebody else? You want me to answer the answer? Okay, next citizen communication, Adam.
Chuck, a month ago, I asked y'all, or showed you pictures of a property of, of one Bobcat Pope out of the tracks, grocery store. Had, uh, different, uh, hill, safety, uh, hazards, collapsed buildings, et cetera. Y'all saw the pictures. That was two months ago and nothing's happened over there. I'd like an update. Has, uh, the owner's been notified of any of all, uh, the violation there? And is it gonna get cleaned up?
If, from, from my understanding, yes, and Miss Dalton said you two come to her, come back her office tomorrow. That's all I know on that, that's all I can.
I can address her office tomorrow because I work and she closed it before I get off.
Addressing that, we have houses, we've been working on them two years, that has not, you know, for one reason, uh, we've not got to. West Island, several islands over there, Newtown, I mean, around the city, I, I don't want you to think it's nothing. But there's a lot of houses we haven't got to.
Oh, I understand that, but that property has come up before in the previous code enforcers and nothing is ever done with it.
Well, we have a bunch of properties that we are.
Oh, I, I understand that, I understand that, but I appreciate it if y'all would keep an eye on that and let something get done about it. Before some kid gets in that mess over there and gets hurt. Y'all saw the pictures, you know what's there. And that's a liability issue. City could end up in a lawsuit, she could end up in a lawsuit. And I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Right, I think, yes.
Move the wheels up.
Please sit.